Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 13th, 2014. And this is the City of Burnsville Planning Commission Meeting. It's my pleasure now to call the meeting to order. Welcome, Commissioners.
Welcome, Chair.
Welcome, staff. Welcome, those in the audience. And to our listening and viewing audience, a very warm welcome to you. The agenda for tonight's meeting is as follows. Item one, adoption of the agenda. Item two, approval of the minutes of the July 28th Planning Commission Meeting. Item three, public hearing and application for Adelman Properties II LLC for a preliminary and final plat to be known as Adelman's First Edition and a conditional use permit for outdoor storage for the existing building located at 1800 Highway 13 West. Item four, updates and adjournment. Commissioners, any additions to the agenda? Staff?
None.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Braddock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed 4-0. Item two, approval of the minutes from the July 28th, 2014 Planning Commission Meeting. Any corrections?
None from me, Chair.
None from staff?
None from staff.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Braddock?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Benke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass on a 4-0 vote. Item three. This is a public hearing and application for Adelman Properties II LLC for a preliminary and final plat to be known as Adelman's First Edition and a conditional use permit for outdoor storage for the existing building located at 1800 Highway 13 West. Mr. Slenia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. This is a public hearing. The project in front of you is two-part. It includes plating of two existing parcels that are meets and bounds description right now, as well as a conditional use permit for outdoor storage. The location is 1800 Highway 13 West. The property is adjacent to the new, well, newly reconfigured County Road 5 and 13 interchange. It is in the northwest corner. It is Zone B4. The two properties exist as B4 surrounded by B4 zoning and B4 PUD development. B4 stands for Highway Commercial. It is also designated as Minnesota River Quadrant in our comprehensive plan. Here's an aerial photo of the site. To put it in perspective, again, County Road 5 is here. Highway 13 is here. Burnsville Motors sits right here. You can see the new configuration of the frontage road. U-Haul sits right here. This was a project, maybe five or six years ago, redevelopment of the U-Haul facility. And again, here's another image of the site. The existing building sits along the west property line. The new configuration of the frontage road. You can see the previous operator, I guess current operator, Tri-State Bobcat, as they're moving into their new facility and the adjacent U-Haul. I'll come back to this picture because it does depict some good images of the change in elevation, and those will be good discussion points as we move forward. So, as I indicated, it does exist as two parcels. Both are substandard in size together, or excuse me, both are substandard in size. Together, they do satisfy our B4 requirements for width and size. The applicant is also dedicating just over 2,000 square feet along the south property line, dedicating right-of-way to, I believe it's MidDOT in this case, to satisfy their requirements. The plat provides the necessary easements and does satisfy our requirements. As I indicated, the property's Zone B4. Outdoor storage is a conditional use permit in that zoning district. In total, the site represents 1.7 acres and exists as Tri-State Bobcat is a tenant. The applicant in this situation is a potential tenant with a lease-to-own proposal with the property owner. Captain Transport and Recovery would be the tenant for this facility. They are commercial and residential, if need be, transport facility. They deal with transporting vehicles to and from auctions or dealerships for the commercial standpoint. They also deal with vehicles that are damaged in an accident, getting them to and from a body shop. They also hold private towing contracts for shopping centers, restaurants, et cetera. We can get into some of the details of that as we move along. The site received conditional use permit for outdoor storage back in 1977. At that time, it was for a car dealership. As you've seen, if you've been by the site, much of the facility, much of the existing area used by Tri-State Bobcat is gravel. There's very little landscaping or manicured area. It exists as only 11% green space. The applicant, through the proposal, is doing a very good job to bring the site up to some aesthetic improvements and satisfy some of the ordinance requirements. So, as I indicated, it is 1.7 acres in size. The building's 7,400 square feet. Existing green space is only 11%. The applicant is bringing that up to 25%. They are satisfying the parking requirements, exceeding the amount of parking needed for the use. They are also utilizing much of the back area as a yard or storage area. That's the screen portion of the property. But they are providing significant parking onsite. As I indicated, it would be platted into a lot and block. You can see right here the existing property line between the two parcels. This resolves a number of issues with city ordinance and non-conformities among the two parcels by bringing them into one. I would like to indicate one item related to the plat. The building sits too close to the west property line. It is, I believe, in some cases, two or three or six feet from that property line. There would be a required setback that would bring the building more into the center of the property. At this time, because of the non-conforming status of the building, staff is recommending we put the required drainage and utility easements around the property lines. That would install a 10-foot drainage and utility easement along this property line. It would not be utilized till its full capacity until that building was moved, but at that time, we would have an easement that satisfies our requirements. And when or if the building is reconstructed, we'd be looking to satisfy the required setbacks and would be out of that 10-foot easement. I indicated some of the uses that, or some of the operations provided by the applicant. Captain Transport does not do any bodywork or maintenance on vehicles they bring to the site or their fleet vehicles. That is all done off-site at a different location. So, we're trying to get a handle on what this use is, how clean it is, how well-run it is. That was a big selling point for staff, that there may be vehicles there that are brought in from an accident on their way to a body shop or someplace else. Bodywork, engine repair, does not occur at this site. They are a transport company getting it, the vehicles from point A to point B. Outdoor storage is a conditional use in this zoning district. The applicant has satisfied the screening requirements with an eight-foot fence that is proposed around the property. And I'll indicate where it is on this plan. The fence will start in the northwest corner of the building, running back, not all the way to the back property line, but quite a distance into the backyard, straight across to the east, and it will end here. I believe in my staff report, I indicated it would be brought back to this point. There is an existing fence that runs here. There is also significant grade change. This is a retaining wall that is on the U-Haul property, I believe, six or eight feet in height. Staff was not concerned with screening from the adjacent property due to those grade changes. Our main concern was screening from the frontage road, which is done by the building, and the existing masonry wall and gate that are up front, and the proposed fence along this side and then running to the north. And I'll jump back to this image. You can see the retaining wall starts here, and as you move back, increases in height. This would be the area that is, the fence comes back to this wall and then stops. So, there is, not from U-Haul's elevation, but there is a clear definitive buffer and screening from the site. There is also a new retaining wall that was installed as part of the frontage road. And again, this site does sit slightly higher than this frontage road between the grade change and then the eight-foot screen fence. Staff's comfortable with the screening proposed, both from an aesthetic point of view, from the community standpoint, and the property owner is also looking for a secure location. As I indicated in the background, many of the vehicles brought to site would be taken off-site or vacated from the premises within 14 days. There's obviously hiccups with that. Not everything goes as planned. There are times that 14 days is not met exactly, and staff and the applicant have discussed some of the conditions, and I'll get into that in a minute. So, we're comfortable with some flexibility. The second part of that is although the applicant does not have a, I'll say, a law enforcement contract, so they're currently not towing for a municipality or a sheriff's department or state trooper or anything like that. When a vehicle is brought from a shopping center, apartment complex, or something like that to this site, by state statute, it is considered an impounded vehicle. And thus, the property owner, the applicant, has certain timeframes. It's certainly his goal to get the vehicle off the property and out of his possession so that he has space for other vehicles to bring in and so forth. But by statute, if someone is slow to pick up their vehicle, he's obligated to keep it there up to 60 days. So, again, there is a change in the condition that we can discuss a little bit later. I wanted to give you a little background on that. As I indicated, the applicant is improving green space to the site. Currently, everything past this line is gravel. The applicant is delineating this area. There will be new vituuminous and curb added. There will also be a landscaping plant. So, this is impervious, or excuse me, pervious surface that's being added. There are trees added to the site. The fence, again, does not run all the way back to the back property line, so there is a portion of green space that is added to the site that is not there now. Staff has also requested the applicant peel back the parking that is along the frontage road to satisfy the front yard setback. So, additional green space and plantings can be added there. The jump in green space is from 11% to 25%. 25% is the minimum requirement by ordinance. They are satisfying that. They've also, again, added substantial landscaping to increase the curb appeal of the property. There are two portions of parking that currently exist within the setback. The applicant has adjusted one. This is a concrete parking pad along the, excuse me, east property line. Staff is also requiring that be adjusted. It would remove, I believe, three parking stalls in an opportunity to add green space and landscaping there. That is a condition that was listed in your report. As you may hear from the applicant, long-term, they are interested in tearing down the building, putting up a new facility. That's not in the budget at this time. They are looking to get into the facility, make these improvements, secure this facility with the site, and put the new building into a long or future improvement. Right now, as I said, there is a masonry wall along the front. The applicant is not proposing any improvements to the building as it sits. As I indicated, there is a 20-foot setback. And again, this setback is determined from the new dedicated right-of-way line. You can see this odd-shaped here. This is the 2,000 square feet being dedicated. So, the new property line is right here, and that's where we're measuring the 20 feet from. It does provide sufficient area for parking for the applicant's needs along the front of the property. The applicant has done a nice job of satisfying the landscape requirements based on the amount of green space being added. The shrubs and the trees satisfy the ordinance requirements. The applicant is looking at a black eight-foot fence for security reasons. They feel eight feet is reasonable. Staff is supportive of that, again, because of the increased block from the storage area. The screen fence does run along the north end of the property. Staff is recommending some of these trees be reconfigured, not additional trees added to the site, but reconfigured. I'll jump to this image. These are remnant parcels that are currently owned by Dakota County from the 5 and 13 interchange project. I can't say how quickly, but quickly enough, these will be marketable sites, and the city will be looking for redevelopment on these two parcels or a combination of the two parcels, something like that. So, staff is recommending the trees be added in this area or reconfigured in this area to provide a buffer, try to block that screen fence and provide an aesthetic Commissioners, I think the last item I wanted to cover in the review would be the conditions. I indicated a couple of them. There are some more details that I'll walk through. Again, in speaking with the applicant and working with staff, since the report came out, staff has adjusted the conditions specifically one and two and number seven. What you see on the screen and the piece of paper in front of you is reflective of the current conditions. The applicant may want to speak to these as well. From the city's standpoint and the applicant's standpoint, we are not looking at a junkyard or a salvage yard. That's not their intent, and that is certainly not our intent either. We do understand these vehicles may not be, all of them may not be turned over in those first 14 days. It's not the staff's intent to micromanage or be following up with the applicant on these conditions on a weekly or monthly basis. So, we wanted to find common ground that was workable with everyone. So, we have revised condition one as well as condition two. Again, because of the nature of the business, there is incidental impounding on the site. There are approximately 100 stalls available to the applicant in the backyard area or the storage area. Staff feels the incidental use, 35 of those stalls allocated to impounding, and again, that can be longer, can reach 60 days if the owner of the vehicle is not able to pick up the car. So, that is the revisions to condition number two. As I, I just want to note, conditions three, four, five, and six have not changed from your report. Condition three is important to note, we are looking for some information, some additional information prior to allowing infiltration on the site. Again, we are near a shallow bedrock area. Each site is slightly different. Staff didn't necessarily want to commit the applicant to infiltration requirements if the site is not conducive to that. So, we have requested additional information that can be handled at a staff level with the city engineer. Number five speaks to the east side of the property up front. We are looking at that parking as well get peeled back so it does satisfy the setback, and it would be the ability to add just a little bit more landscaping to the site. Six is the same as in the report. And seven, again, rather than adding additional trees, the applicant has requested reconfiguring. There are eight or 10 or a dozen trees in that north area. Staff's comfortable reconfiguring those just so there is a buffer between the future development and the eight-foot fence. Commissioners, that is where staff is on the application. We're supportive of it. The applicant's been good to work with. They're excited to get a new location, excited to be in Burnsville. They do have a team here that are able to answer questions. Ryan and I can address questions as well. I guess the one thing I wanted to bring up for the commission's discussion... I guess the one thing I wanted to bring up for the commission's discussion, again, is the timing on the vehicles. We certainly, again, don't want to micromanage the applicant. We want to find a compromise that everyone's agreeable to. If there are concerns with the timing or the use, we can work through those. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll stand for any questions, and we can hear from the applicant in a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slenia. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Slenia? Or if you would like to bring the applicant up to answer questions, you can do so too.
Chris, I just had a couple of things. The report talks that there will be no vehicle repair, but the letter from the applicant specifically says that they are looking to add vehicle repair in the future. I was also curious that we are making a distinction between impounded vehicles and something else, but what are they classifying as something else in terms of vehicles for the two different timeframes?
Mm-hmm. I can, I can address that, and then the applicant can follow up. At this point, with the facility they have, they're not pursuing maintenance of the vehicles. Again, they, they are interested in a new building at some point, at which time they may be able to pursue repair or maintenance of the vehicles. The addition of a building will require a conditional use permit amendment. I know the applicant's also looking at pursuing some, some other contracts in Burnsville, or Burnsville is a municipality, is a contract, and as some of those evolve, it may require a conditional use permit amendment.
Okay, that, that's where we stand now.
The, the first two, the distinguish, distinguishing between conditions one and two, as staff sees it, again, we're, we know we're not dealing with a junkyard or a salvage yard. Our intent is not necessarily an impound lot, but by the nature of their business, they have certain restrictions they have to deal with by the state. So we want to try to accommodate that. There are vehicles that are bought and sold at auctions. There are vehicles that are brought into Minnesota from out of the country. They have to go through certain custom requirements and things like that. And the applicant, that is something the applicant does on a day-to-day business. I'm sure he can get into more of those details, but that is really the distinguishing factor between one and two, is vehicles that are there on a very short term, a week or two, or in this case, 21 days.
One other planning question, I guess. Does the, does plating that drains utility easement with the building in it create a problem for planning or for engineering?
No. We see it as a benefit long-term. We understand the building's non-conforming right now. We understand no utilities will be, no utility companies will be going in that easement, but a long-term, we do see the benefit of having it there.
Sure. I guess the building's been there as long as I have, so I'm wondering how long it'll, it'll be there, but that's a question for the applicant, I'm sure.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to expand on that last question about the building. A 10-foot easement, can you just explain the parameters? If a new building isn't, is constructed on that site, what would be the setback along that west line?
The, the setback without any deviations would be 40 feet from that property line. So it obviously would satisfy the 10 feet of drainage and utility plus some, putting the, the building more centralized onto the site.
Okay, so a building of 40 on the west, I wasn't ready for that number, so what would, easterly setback?
Would only be 10.
And what is the width of the property?
A hundred, what? I just checked this, is it 154? Yes. 154.
So just to build on that, just so I get a, I mean, as we look at future uses, and I think maybe the applicants looked at this too, is that's the building. Now, how about parking or driveway setbacks, especially along that westerly side?
Parking, let me think here. It would be the same as the front, so everything would be 20 feet. It, it's, the 40 feet is unique because it is considered a, a two-frontage lot. It has frontage on the south and, and the west sides.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Broderick?
I have just a couple of quick questions for question, and one for Ryan, so. In the past, we've had some deviations on curb height, you know, for cars, and did we land with something different there than our standard? I know the, a couple of Luther dealerships and stuff we did on Buck Hill, we had some variances on curb height, I thought it was, so it wouldn't damage vehicles. Was there?
There is nothing, nothing on that. The applicant hasn't requested anything. Right now, we're looking at B612. I, Brian might have to help me with this. I want to think there, there might be an adjustment to this. Is this a surmountable curb or something like that? Because it does drain north. The balance of it would be standard curb.
Yeah, that, that north, the north property line would, would either be no curb whatsoever to allow, because that is where the drainage goes, or would be some sort of a surmountable tip-out curb. I think it would probably be easier on that, on that parcel to just, to let it drain off of the pavement versus trying to get it in a curb. Because it not only flows to the north, but it has some east-west movement as well, and if you put that curb in there, it's going to want to funnel into one area versus sheet flow off of that pavement. So I think it'd be better to just let it sheet flow off that pavement.
Okay. I was just curious if we had to do any, and there's not a lot of curb. There's some up front, but I know we'd had some deviations in curb heights in the past. Ryan, if the, I kind of get the vision for the back, for the northern part of the property, if the soils are conducive? If the, if we're too close to the bedrock and it's not, what does that space look like with all this water that's going down that direction? And if there's no retention, what about the neighbor's property? There's a fair amount of impervious surface that's all going to go to the north. It may be going someplace now. I just was curious how that's going to look.
The drainage patterns have not changed at all, so right, I mean, essentially, everything right now flows on a, on a impervious pavement, being the gravel, to the north, and eventually soaks in, you know, to the sites off to the north. If we do, again, if, if we don't have infiltration opportunities, you're going to have a real nice green, green space buffer that's going to slow down that drainage, and it will infiltrate some on its own naturally. If we find out we do have soils conducive to infiltration, then it will be more of kind of just a depressed basin, not, not a pond or anything of that nature, but just a little shallow depressed basin that will gather some of that water before it leaves the site. It would have an emergency overflow that would, again, leave the site to the north if there was a large storm event. But essentially, right now, by adding this green space, we are, we are definitely improving the site. It's not a large amount of impervious pavement to begin with, but the fact that they're knocking it down, I feel confident that we are improving the site here.
And the emergency overflow would be something tied to the city storm sewer? Or it's just going to go?
It'd be an overland.
Go on to the property owner to the north?
Correct, to the north. It would just be overland flow to the north.
Okay, as it is?
As it is right now.
Okay, all right. And, and Chris, I just have a, to a previous question. From a feasibility standpoint, has there been any work done on what a new building would look like and where it would sit, given all of the easements we, you know, the setbacks we discussed? And is there a legitimate site for a building that's not, because it's long and narrow, that's going to give them a functioning building?
Absolutely. I have not seen plans. I don't know that the applicants, you know, got to that development stage yet, but there is sufficient space. Again, it would be, I don't want to say larger than normal. It would be a deep setback on the east, the west side. It would only be 10 feet on the east side. From the applicant's standpoint, they're looking for garage bays or stalls, if you will. So a long, narrow building would, would function well for them. That's, again, they've got, whether it's their own fleet or other vehicles they may need to get inside, that long, narrow design would, would help them.
So then all of our, all the work we're requiring them to do today with the adjustments to the front parking lot, the setback from the frontage road, in your opinion, we're then, we're in compliance with everything? So if they build a new building, unless they make, unless they choose to tear something up, they shouldn't have to start over? With anything that's in place after this, any of our current conditions?
Correct. That is the intent, Commissioners. We did bring that up as far as green space, sufficient yard area. The intent would be that this area does not necessarily change in the future. That fence goes in, that green space is there, the landscaping's in. It would be the area where the building sits between U-Haul that gives the applicant the, the space they need to develop or redevelop, whatever you want to say. You know, we, we did talk, again, if, if there is infiltration requirements or anything like that, we would design, or we would look at preparing it in such a way that it does accommodate the building, so we're not back here again, or the applicant's not engineering this thing twice.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Any other question? Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Just to build on Commissioner Broderick's question about the filtration, Ryan. So under this, just a point of clarification for me, I guess, the Water Resource Management Plan at the city, filtration, or infiltration's required. If it's not conducive, is filtration another requirement? Or how does, how does that fall on the applicant?
There, within the Water Resource Management Plan, it doesn't decipher or differentiate too much between infiltration and filtration. I know it's something that Ryan's talked about looking at in the future with the, with the whole MS4 and things changing, but they are meeting the ordinance. There's, there's a little bit of wiggle room. The ordinance talks about if there's more than 5,000 feet disturbed, or more than a half acre of impervious added. Well, in this case, they are, they're, they're not adding more impervious, they're reducing that. They are disturbing slightly over 5,000, but the question becomes, what's disturbed if you're just paving over a, an existing gravel? Is that really disturbing or not? So there's kind of that gray area where we had to use some judgment, and that's kind of how we came to the decision to say, okay, we're, we're improving the site, we're not necessarily disturbing 5,000 square feet, but if we have an opportunity and we're adding a green space, can we try to infiltrate? Filtration is, is, is an opportunity as well. I think you're going to naturally get that with that green space, because that water's going to sheet flow through that, that green space area, and that will filter out naturally on its own.
Okay, thank you. One more question, Chris. Back to the trees. I kind of look at those five elms on the east property line below the U-Haul retaining wall. And the reconfiguration thoughts that you had, any thoughts to maybe putting those in a spot where they might provide a little additional screening, more productive screening, I should say, rather than against the retaining wall?
We can certainly look at that. I was more focused, and the applicant brought this up, these coniferous, again, they're in the same spot. They're really in the shadow of the retaining wall. They're going to do more good out here. I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I'm sure they're open to reconfiguring some of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I had the same question here that I had to ask. Any other questions for Mr. Slenia? Okay, would you like to bring up the applicant questions?
Yes, please.
Okay, would the applicant please come to the podium and kindly mention your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Chair. Members of the commission, my name is Jim Conley. I'm with APRO Development.
Welcome, Jim.
Thank you. And this is Kayan Saran, owner-operator of Captain Transport Recovery.
You heard some of the questions. Let's start with the last one that was raised. That's the one with the reconfiguring of the trees. Rather than putting them around that retaining wall area, can we put them so that they, they serve to be a buffer for the fence?
Yes, that seems to make sense to us as well. Trees are not real conducive to our business anyway, but as long as they're to the north and away from things, that's, that's better for us, so.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I guess my big one was the desire to build a new building. Just curious if you have a trigger or something that you're looking at that would, that would create that need for you for the new building?
I think just overall for Kayan, it's a, it's a matter of today getting up and operating from, you know, he just hasn't started up yesterday, but I'd still consider him a startup business, and this gives him a real anchor location for the business that he doesn't have today. So I think today, it's the focus is, let's operate and expand the operations as they are today, and work our way into something that's more than just transportation and recovery, and it's more of a full-service sort of, your car breaks down, you can take it, they can fix it and send you back on the road instead of just towing to remote areas and things like that. So I think that's the goal, is to just make that, just to broaden the base of opportunities within the business.
Sure. And with this being a new property, he still does have a place that he currently keeps the, the vehicles that he uses in his business, right?
But that would go away. I mean, where they're at today, they would be moving entirely to this.
Okay, so the, any maintenance that he's doing on those vehicles at that location moves to this location, then?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's maintenance of trucks and things like that that they have. The people that they have today aren't necessarily qualified to replace a transmission in a tow truck or things of that nature. So that does happen off-site today as well. So they do maybe some minor replace a light, maybe some brakes, things like that, kind of a daily sort of wear and tear on a vehicle like a tow truck, but things like the real maintenance or upkeep, things like that, just do happen off-site, so.
And then just curious, how many trucks does the applicant run?
At this moment, we have five trucks, sir. We are looking for three more this summer to add on to our fleet to accommodate this winter, and hopefully we'll be moving into the city. And then once we are working in the planning, and people be looking forward to get this city contract, on that time, we are ready to move on for next fleet.
Very good.
On the, I guess, from the building standpoint, that we talked a little bit about the trees. So on one of our conditions, Chris, it talks a little about can reconfigure the proposed coniferous trees, and do we need to rework that at some point where it's just reworking the trees as the conversation that came up? Or is that good, the way that sits? Be more on your recommendation of what you think you need.
I, I think the applicant's open to it. We can leave the condition.
Okay, just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And then, do you have any other concerns of the other six conditions?
No, I think we've acquiesced. I mean, number five is probably the most painful. We didn't realize that one was really going to happen until we were well into the process. But, I mean, we understand that's a requirement going forward to, to give up some of that area up front, and so with, with all seven, I think that was the one that, to get our arms around, because we don't really see the frontage road changing at this point. It seems like it's changed to what it's going to be. So giving more right-of-way, we weren't sure why they had to be, but that's a MinDOT requirement, not City of Burnsville, so, you know, that's not for us to decide, but...
They're a much bigger body than we are.
So, other than that, no, I don't think.
Everything is okay? Okay. Kayan, where are you moving from? Where are you, where, what city are you moving from?
At this moment, we are operating since 2005 in Rosemont. At 160th Street and Highway 3, behind those gas tank areas, there's a company called Mergic Automotive, and we were sharing the lot with them since 2005. Moving along with the moving companies, we are representing North American and AAA and some other moving companies, when their CEOs or the American, the other companies coming in, out, we are taking in... When they are CEOs or the American, the other companies coming in, out, we are taking inspection of their vehicles coming into state and we are doing the inspection to release the vehicle, the other transporter. We became the primary member of the all states, Aggero, Geico, and the State Farm Insurance Company as a roadside assistance provider. Our mainly goal is going out, not in the, staying on the site, but whoever's staying on the highways, tire change, battery jump, or the, being an accident that needs to be removed from the site, taking the, their service provider as the moving companies and also the repair facilities. We were talking about in the future to get in the new building because AAA, which is located in Burnsville, and they are looking for more service provider who can provide the repair facility in the same time of the, instead of sending different repair shops or making the more general facility. So that's why we are looking for the bigger building in the future with the, the permission of the city giving us the repair. On that time, we will be looking for different projections.
Okay. How many, how many jobs do you plan on bringing to the city?
As many as I can.
How many, how many employees do you currently have today? Or are they contractors? Are the drivers contractors?
Well, we don't have any subcontractor right now. That we do have seven employees in the company at this moment, but we are planning to hire more because winter is coming and we are going to get it ready. If the winter's same as the last winter, we should be ready as quick as we can. If they call back-to-back, maybe we'll be making some process there.
Well, at this point, we won't blame you for the winter if it's the same. Thank you, and I appreciate the new jobs in our community.
It's my pleasure to be here.
Any other questions? I have a couple, Mr. Saran or Mr. Connolly, if you can answer this. Sometimes when you have to bring in a vehicle that was involved in an accident, a serious accident, and you tow that vehicle into your property there and it's left overnight or two or three days, sometimes there's leakage and oil may be leaking from that vehicle. What plans you have for to mitigate the soil, there being, the oil leaking in the yard?
If the case of the due to accident leakage, most of the time when we arrive to vehicle or because of the waiting for the investigation through the officers, the whatever is leaking, is leaking on the site.
Okay.
I'm sure that there will be some more leakage when we bring it over to our site, which is our goal to hold it there as minimum as possible, but sometimes the insurance company, adjuster and the customer or the owner of the vehicle, they don't go into settlement right of way.
Yeah.
So we have to wait for them until they release the vehicle to each other. On that time, that's why we are putting to bituminous asphalt into our yard and we are not going to be using any gravel area to stop the leakage. If there's any existing, there is so many different process of this industry, we can put something layer underneath the vehicle, then we will block the more oil leakage.
Thank you for that explanation. One other question, and this is regards, is in regards to signage. I know the sign you have, you have there is, it's not so big, but it's big, but are you requesting any changes in the signage?
Currently, that sign out front, the Bobcat sign and things like that, that, those faces would come off and we would put a, a new sign on those poles.
Okay.
Yeah, we would replace that signage.
Thank you very much.
Your bet.
Any other questions or so? Thank you very much, Mr. Saran, Mr. Connolly, for your presentation, for answering the questions.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Commissioners, this application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the commission on this application, please do so right now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and discussion. Comments?
I, I personally think it's a, it's a good use for the property. We've got an internal business moving to another site and a new one coming from another city, and that's a win for us. And I think the use is conducive to the site that's there, and I appreciate them taking a look at the site and moving to the city. I support the application and I support all the conditions as revised with the one notification or one note about the extra tree reconfiguring.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Any other comments?
I concur. I think that a, a new business moving to Burnsville with the potential for a, a new building and more jobs is, is really a win for Burnsville, absolutely. I also think that this is appropriate for the area.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Okay.
Chair, I would be willing to make a motion unless you have discussion points.
No, I don't. I, I just, I'm just looking at you and-
Okay. Okay. I, I move that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the preliminary and final plaque to be known as Edelman First Edition and a conditional use permit for outdoor storage for the existing building located at 1800 Highway 13 West as the seven conditions are stated in our revised paperwork.
Thank you, Commissioner Broderick.
That's perfect. Second?
Second by Commissioner Thomas. Any other discussion? Those in favor of the motion, we say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Passed on a four-zero vote. Congratulations and welcome to Burnsville. This matter will be going to the city council on Tuesday, August 19th. Okay, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is updates. Updates from, any commissioner?
Chair, I have none.
I have none. None.
I have one item here. Oh. Commissioners, I think you are aware of this, that the Metropolitan Council is in the process of developing its regional development goals and plans known as Thrive MSP 2040. One component of the plan relates to water supply and planning for the entire region. City staff is attending various information sessions and providing comments on the regional plan sections as they are completed. The Thrive MSP 2040 plan will be more extensive, especially related to water supply planning to address how the region should be managing aquifers, surface waters, et cetera. And they are inviting commissioners to attend the work sessions. I think the next one will be tomorrow, August 14th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Minnetonka Community Center Dining Room. And the next one after that is Thursday, August 21, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Maplewood Community Center Room C. If you can find time to attend, it would be great. Any other updates?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, just, just the note on the next meeting will be Monday, August 25th. I've got a note that Commissioners Singh and Thomas will be absent. I will follow up with Commissioners Corey and Tahiri and make sure we have quorum for that.
Very good.
Okay, that's, brings us to the end. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Move, move to adjourn.
Motion, Commissioner Broderick moved and Commissioner Benke seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, thank you very much for coming and for your deliberations. Staff, great job as usual, thank you. To our listening and viewing audience, thanks for tuning us in. See you again on the next meeting. So, we stand adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.